There's a lot of people here who haven't been here before. But my name is Bruce Elliott, I'm the chairman of the zoning commission in Simsbury. And my colleagues are, we have one person who's out tonight, one of our regular commissioners. And Josh, if you'll sit in for her tonight, we'll appoint you as the chair to be seated. And with that said, I think we're ready to go. For the first order of business, we're gonna review the minutes of the meeting of March third. So why don't we get on with that. Does anybody have comments? I've read the minutes of March third. I had one tiny change, but does anybody else have comments, changes, corrections?
I got a couple of minor comments.
Okay, Tony, why don't we go?
When you had Mr. Chairman, line twenty eight, I believe that should be six zero, not seven zero. And line.
Tony, what line was that?
Uh, twenty eight.
Okay.
It's the vote.
Seven zero, it should be six zero. And line fifty, chair, chairman should be capitalized. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tony.
And I wanted to offer a correction on line forty. About the fifth word in, should be rented to, rented to households, the word to is missing. So it needs to be inserted there. Anything else? Anybody got other comments? Uh, hearing none. But if we have a motion to approve of those corrections.
Me too. Oh, go ahead.
In a second.
There are ones that.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as they were corrected. All in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. So we have six oh to approve. And that carries the minutes as settled for the March third meeting. So moving right along, our first order of business is to hear from representatives of application twenty five oh two, which is signage for the building, one of the buildings at two hundred Hot Meadow Street. And this application was going to be heard last two weeks ago, but for whatever reason, pushed it off. Our representatives here from the, oh, wanna come right up? Um, I need you to get up to the podium. Need to start with your name and address and try to speak.
Lovely.
Yeah, with volume. So people watching at home can hear you.
Um, so Marissa Pratt, my home address is six Andrew Drive in Canton, Connecticut. Um, but our business is one Cooper Avenue in Simsbury.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it does have its, it's got its own address now, it's been readdressed from two fifty Hot Meadow to one Cooper Avenue. So, so yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could help out just, just a little bit, so, so it is a sign application. It's a sign application in your Hartford-Simsbury form-based code, which doesn't have specific sign guidelines or sign regulations, which is quite interesting. So, we're gonna treat it like, um, you know, planned area development or a planned development district, uh, where an app can come, can come in with sign sizes and you can approve them as, as really, uh, at will without, without any particular regulation associated with it. Uh, I think the two signs you see tonight are not particularly egregious, they're kind of regular wall signs. Um, and I think originally, looking back on one of the original elevations, you know, these, they're, you know, two, two commercial buildings that, that are shown as part of the Hartford North commercial piece. And they were, they were originally shown to you in, in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen as multiple, multiple tenant buildings. So, and also some of those elevations showed four, five, six, seven signs. So I think there was some understanding there would be multiple signs at this, uh, at this location. So in this case, Goddard is taking most of one Cooper Avenue.
We're taking all.
Oh, all the building, I don't think, I don't think we knew that. So they've got a proposal for, for two, two wall signs. Maybe I'll just, I'll just keep going.
Sorry.
It's your, it's your, it's your application, I'll just help when you need me.
Yeah, so we're taking majority of the building, the ups, some of the upstairs space is gonna be unoccupied, but they're not going to be leasing it out. Um, so we have a northern sign, um, which will be by the front door, um, to let families know kind of where that entrance is. Um, and then on the western side, on that Hot Meadow, um, road street sign is, um, which would be another sign. It is not gonna be that one, um, the design board, one of the first one, um, that sign. On the front, on the Hot Meadow side also, so it'll be that same type of sign, that same wording, um, uh, the Hot Meadow sign so that emergency personnel can find the building and see where we are.
So, two, two signs, one on the northern, which is, you know, essentially the entrance from the parking lot.
Yes.
Western sign is what you can see from Hot Meadow Street. Uh, the, as I understand it, from Design Review, got a recommendation of approval from Design Review with a couple of conditions. And I think that, I understand the condition as this sign is good.
Yes.
Which is a blue sign, this sign is good with color, but they would like the same double stacking or the sta- they'd like this stacking on this sign. And Kate understands what I'm trying to say, right?
I know what you're saying.
So that was the recommendation from our friends at the Design Review, but so, so that's it, two signs in, in the, with that recommendation. I don't, I, you might wanna ask the applicant what their, what their feelings are on, on that, on that condition.
Were you at the meeting?
I was at the meeting.
You were at the meeting?
Yes.
And did you have any comments to the, to the commission about the suggestions?
This, uh, they, they strongly did not like this one being here like this, so.
Does it fit stacked like on the front of the building nicely?
It seems to me it's gonna make the letters smaller.
It will have to go, so if you, if you look at it, it's gonna be smushed in so you can't, it won't take part of the gray space, but it will be above in that white panel.
It'll be shorter and taller.
Stacked up in there, yeah.
It will, yeah.
But they, they saw it as being co- more cohesive.
And it's gonna be blue on top of the white building?
No, I think they said it's okay.
The colors are gonna stay the same.
No, the, the white, yeah, the white background would stay the same with the blue lettering. Kind of being worker.
Kate, would you override that? No, I mean it, Kate was on Design Review, she has the expertise.
I don't know that I have a strong preference either way, that I would want to like override their entire meeting or whatever they were discussing, but I mean, I don't personally have a problem with it.
Right, 'cause it fits.
Being long, 'cause it seems like it fits proportionally with the building, but, um, you know, okay. Just wondering.
I agree.
So as always, and Design Review Board's recommendation is advisory to, to this body and make the decision as you like.
What do you like?
Probably what she presented, typically.
Um, I, I don't know what the, the other ones would look like, so I have to go back to the drawing board and kind of figure that out, so.
Are you a member of the school faculty or are you a?
I'm one of the owners.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Well, how about if we s-
Sorry, I mean, I, 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 not to disparage or, or go against anything that Design, Design Review said, I don't personally see anything wrong with that, and it seems like it would fit a lot better to me.
Yeah.
It's what the applicant wants and I sure though I'll get yelled at afterward for this one, I mean, I really, I, I don't, I don't see any reason, I don't see any reason to, uh, put the condition on, I think that, that as, as presented, this looks fine to me, I don't see a reason not to vote for it.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I was an art major once. I think the proportion makes more sense. That way than squeezing, shortening to more of a square than a rectangle. It's okay.
Dad, yeah, I wasn't an art major. I'm pitiful, but what did you just say? Which one is your preference?
I said that the proportions.
Here's the second.
The horizontal.
What, what was presented there?
If that's where you're gonna have a sign, works better than to have a squeezed tall square in that space. It doesn't make sense. From an aesthetic point.
I mean, I think that the concept was, what the Design Review Board was saying is just that the signage is inconsistent as presented, so it would be like this white sign with the blue horse with the vertical and then there's like a blue sign with a white horse with it stacked and so like there's not consistent signage on the building, um, which I mean, I can understand for sure, but, um, I, yeah.
They're wrong, man.
Have they considered making a statue of the horse and putting it on top of the building?
They're wrong.
Please stop it.
Somebody's done that.
But I guess they are two different spaces, right?
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't like the white, they didn't like the white, um, panel.
Overhanging the white, yeah.
Yes.
Make it blue.
Yeah, what if you switch that to blue and then with white lettering, so it matches the other sign?
Does that work for you?
Would you be open to that?
Yes.
Yeah, have them be.
Okay, so that seems like a, a meeting in the middle, compromise.
Okay.
It's still stacked, you mean?
No, no.
No, but it's not stacked.
Horizontal.
Like that.
Blue, but not stacked.
Convert colors.
Si- single line as opposed to double.
First the colors.
Let's do it.
The same colors as the other sign.
So there would be two single line signs.
No.
No.
No, no. So this guy, so this guy stays the same, right, this, this one says the same, this one on the, on the north elevation stays the same.
Just the.
This one would be th- 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 this standard, but in blue with white font.
Yes.
Yes.
Same as this.
So they would tie together color wise?
That's how.
And you could have a little horse.
I'm sure you have.
So it would.
I think, I think what they were saying is like, you can see how the box is like, there's that really clear denotion of like this,
Do you want that for her?
of like that window and the like, whatever kind of like wings, cut it, like detailing above, like that's kind of delineated as part of the facade. And then they were trying to get her to align the sign with that like delineation, which I kind of get because the way that it's drawn right now, then it like overhangs the sides. I personally don't think it matters a lot one way or another, um.
No.
I'm not gonna wanna override them on that just to like have my own opinion on it.
They should have a little shorter.
But, but like you, y- yeah, but then if it's shorter, that's why they went with the stacked. So, uh, you know, whatever.
But if it, then it, has anyone shown a diagram of how it would look stacked?
No, they just met today, right?
Yeah.
They just met right before this.
I, I would also just add, n- not only are they in two different locations, they're for two fairly different purposes. One of them is designed to be seen from the road.
Right.
The other is gonna be just at the main entrance that you're gonna be walking up to.
I, I think it would look.
I, I think the single vertical line, it's gonna be much easier to read from the road.
I think aesthetically maybe it would look better, a little shorter to be the same, uh, dimensions as the window be long. Just a little bit shorter.
Wouldn't the?
As opposed to overhanging?
Wouldn't the blue background with the white lettering on the side facing Hot Meadow, Hop Moore, is that what you're saying, Josh, or are you saying the opposite?
I believed, I was not saying either, but I believe the opposite.
Okay then.
Hey, I was saying a, a single line is easier to read than stacked lines.
Yes. Oh, yes, I'm, I'm agreeing with.
When you're, when you're driving by.
Yes, I'm agreeing with that, yeah, for sure.
But I'm okay with it as presented.
Yeah.
What's your takeaway, George?
Oh, I don't think I have an opinion on this one, but you guys are doing great.
You were at the other meeting though.
Brittany was.
I was at the other.
I.
I. I don't have an opinion.
I'm inclined to just take the recommendation of the Design Review Board personally and just move along and approve this.
I think.
That's fine.
Okay. Well, let's just put it differently, does somebody wanna make a motion to change the, here being representation?
Do we need an emotion for that?
If not.
Well, just to accept that as is or, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Or make draft amendment?
Well, let me just look at the draft motion.
There's a mo- I, I have a motion as well, as you might imagine. I have motions for you.
Here we go. So this motion includes Design Review's recommendation. So you could, you could essentially approve the draft motion without the conditions. If, if, or with the conditions.
Is the trade, are you guys attached to the trademark symbol?
We are removing the trademark as the Design Board, uh, asked.
That's just a function of the design drawings.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion to take it as is with the first condition and not the second, yeah, so I mean, I move,
Go right ahead.
I move that the zoning commission approves application ZC number twenty five oh two of S L Simsbury LLC owner Garian Williams of the Hartford Sign and Design LLC applicant for a permit to install two non-illuminated wall signs plus or minus forty nine square feet and plus or minus thirty six square feet for the Goddard School located at one Cooper Avenue, AKA two fifty Hot Meadow Street, assessors map F- s- seventeen block, one five four lot oh oh nine dash three dash two. Weetalk, Connecticut oh six oh eight nine zone. HS F B C, subject to the sign plan titled sketch number one one two one two four dated one eleven twenty one twenty four. Prepared by select sign stamp received three dash ten twenty five with the following conditions, one, the trademark with sim- symbol will be removed from the final sign.
Second.
Somebody has a second. Second.
So we have a motion and a second, is, are there any more, any more discussion, questions, comments? Okay, we'll go ahead with the vote, all in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. The motion passes, so six to zero, so it's unanimous, um, you're all set with your signage?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Believe it or not. Okay. Our next, uh, business, uh, item of business tonight is, um, has to do with the, um, shopping center at, uh, Bushy Hill and forty four, um, Simsbury Common Shopping Center. I'm gonna let the, uh, ownership representative really describe this thing, but it's a, initial thinking about redevelopment of that plaza, unless you're gonna do it, DJ.
I'll be happy.
Did you wanna say something?
Yeah, let me just, come on up, TJ.
No, you go.
I've been standing for a long time. I, so, you know, we've got some, some new commissioners here, just, just a reminder of, of, of this kind of presentation and this kind of prod- project. Uh, the zoning commission encourages informal presentations for complex projects. It's, you know, kind of, kind of what you do. So there's no formal application that's been filed yet, this is what I just said, it is an informal presentation about potential introduction of a mixed-use element of residential, uh, at Simsbury Commons. Um, there's no application pending. The commission and the, and the applicant, the comments that, um, that are generated this evening are non-binding. They are, um, not included in any formal application process. So any support or concern or issues or encouragement, any of those kinds of things, it's kind of a freewheeling, you know, hey, can you think about this or should we think about that? So there are, um, you know, there's really no, no, no ties to, to a conversation like this and it, and it would never impact any final decision upon, upon a formal application that this body would make. So again, I just wanna remind everybody a- about, uh, kind of how we do this. We encourage it and it's non-binding. Turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, and thanks for hearing us tonight. We take advantage of this because we're in front of you periodically and more frequent than not with the Simsbury Commons. It's an important, uh, area in Simsbury and it's important process. And since COVID, it's had troubles like so many malls in the region, in the area and in the country. So, we take advantage to talk to your planning department all the time, uh, and talk about ideas that we might have there. Uh, and tonight I have the owner, one of the owners, um, John Farley from Newtown, Connecticut, here's with us tonight. And I have Zach Chapin, Chaplin, who is our designer from Stonefield in New York City, who's put some design documents together on this. We just wanna have a discussion, we wanna know what the commission thinks about it and, uh, and we want a continuing discussion and dialogue as we deal with the, these, a project like this mall in, in such tough times. So, uh, we, I think Zach's put together some good drawings to start a discussion and we just wanna sit back and listen to what you have to say.
You're pretty cute, so just that way. That's what you said. Thank you. Yeah. Good evening, uh, Happy Saint Patrick's Day. The, uh, the green coloring for tonight. Um, again, my name is Zach Chaplin with Stonefield Engineering, uh, civil engineer, uh, project. So I think for, for this site, there's definitely a lot of opportunity. We're seeing trends for these larger shopping centers of just vacancies and, and retail struggling and, um, my firm has worked on, uh, a number of these types of projects and still actively working on a few, um, where we're introducing different uses to, uh, retail centers that help to kind of revitalize a center. And what's nice to kind of think about is, you know, a lot of it's already there, right? Like the infrastructure's there, the access is there, the utilities are there, the stormwater is there. So there's, it's not like you're starting from scratch and there's all these hurdles of developing like a new type of development. We're taking advantage of a lot of the, the infrastructure that's already there and we're honestly just making, we're looking to improve it, we're making it better for the community. Um, in this case, before I kind of jump into it, I think what's actually interesting about this site is you kind of have like an anchor tenant and Stop &amp; Shop, there's a pharmacy that's there, there's the new OutParcels, like the Raising Canes, um, there's a pickleball center that I hear is very popular. So that's like a lot of good complementary uses for a potential, uh, residential type use on the property. So what we are proposing, and I know it's maybe a little bit hard to see, uh, but essentially is part of the retail strip, uh, kind of like the eastern side, uh, would be removed. Let me just get here. Eighty eight thousand eight hundred and forty-five square feet of retail would be removed, and that's that easterly side of, of the center. Uh, the. But, uh, of the, and, uh, there was a green, a laser. Oh, yeah, right, right here. Yeah.
And that includes the space that used to be Bob's store?
Yes.
Correct, so what, what we're gonna remain is the movie theater, the pickleball and this trampoline facility. Um, just to orient you, uh, Bushy Hill Road is planned south and forty four is planned east. Technically, uh, you know, north is to the left of the page. So Stop &amp; Shop, that's all the way out here to the left, the Raising Canes that just came in, that's, that down here to the right and that's the Santander and Webster Bank. So we're talking about really focusing in on this area up here to remove that retail. There's, there's a lot of, um, it's like a pizza shop, I think like a tutoring facility and, and a couple other small strip retail. Um, I believe Chili's at the corner, that would all be proposed to be removed and that would be, uh, instead of place with a multifamily building. It's, uh, four stories, uh, roughly around three hundred units. Overall, there'd be eighty one thousand sixty square feet of retail to remain that I mentioned. So again, we're trying to obviously keep a lot of the retail that's there and integrate that with the multifamily use.
Could you just hit again, what, what is the eighty one thousand, which basis is that?
So eighty one thousand, that includes the, um, pickleball, the movie theater and the, um, trampoline facility.
Okay.
It does not include the OutParcels or the Stop &amp; Shop, so all of that would remain.
Yeah.
Yeah, just wanna clarify, you're gonna replace the s- spot just above the movie theater?
Yes.
You're walking, if you're placing the movie theater to the right, where there used to be a Bob's, that's gonna be replaced?
Yes.
Yeah. Correct. Yes.
Thanks.
Um, so jumping into the design, um.
I just had, just one more question.
Yep.
Of the three hundred units, do you have a breakdown on?
Um, I don't think we do yet, I think one of the things that, you know, again, we're here tonight is, we're very early, um, we just started coordinating with an architect and, you know, we'd love to receive feedback, we kind of, before we really hone in on, on the design. Okay.
Would you be completely leveling that portion of the building and rebuilding it or were you thinking about trying to like do some sort of adaptive reuse?
Most likely leveling and, and rebuilding.
But some of it's been leveled before, this mall used to be an all indoor mall.
Well, I think they kept a lot of the frame of it, right?
Yes.
No, they didn't, they actually.
The sign we didn't have anymore.
Not really, but anyway.
And so are you gonna show us where parking would be?
Yes, so let me jump in a little bit into the design. So one of the things that we wanted to do, obviously integrate the, the residential and the retail, but also keep it still a little bit separated so that residents aren't just entering in from kind of the main shopping area. So what we did is kind of have like a separate, your, your main entry lobby area would kind of be to the east side of the property. Um, so you'd enter in off forty four back here, you know, we kept it, we understand that, you know, Stop &amp; Shop uses this for loading, there's that cell tower in the back, all that's gonna be able to remain, but essentially we'll have kind of like a, an entry area here worked to, uh, co-share with landscaping, et cetera, so you kind of have a separate entryway for drop-off, FedEx, UPS, et cetera. That's kind of like in the back of the site, kind of separated from the retail, but still obviously connectivity between the two. Um, parking would essentially be both within the building itself, so there'd be parking, um, under the building and also there'd be, um, you know, park, surface parking that's remaining kind of in the center courtyard area and the rear area. Um, and we have looked at the parking and, and, you know, I do think that, you know, we'll be able to provide a parking study that shows that these are actually very compatible uses, the multifamily and the retail and that, um, you know, that should, should work out well should the project move forward.
Just, just to be clear, when you speak of retail, you're speaking of retail that's on your property?
Correct.
The whole, you know, referring to all of the retail that's in that general area.
I mean, you could, you could, I mean, it's worth noting that there is obviously a lot of retail in the area, I'm trying to be more specific to our site.
Yes, I, I just wanted to be clear, you're not.
Yeah.
You're not creating new retail, but you're not getting rid of the, some of the retail that is there, is what there's.
Correct.
You are getting rid of all the retail where your building is existing, that's entire residential building.
With the numbers.
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct.
It's not a mixed-use building, but the same as mixed-use.
Well, yeah, 'cause I guess they, you, you own the movie theater, you own the pickleball, you own the trampoline park, that's not going anywhere.
Correct, yeah.
So.
So you have eighty something thousand and re- retaining fifty three thousand, so you're getting rid of thirty three thousand, give or take?
No, we're keeping eighty one thousand and we're removing eighty eight thousand.
Okay.
So where, the eighty eight thousand is where the proposed multifamily building is?
Correct.
Okay, what? Um, and you might not know this yet, what, what happens to the existing businesses in that area, like Lunas and?
I think those are just lease negotiations, that's probably not something I can answer more than that. Uh, just to kind of sum up, 'cause you're, you know, kind of nearing, uh, the end for me here, but, you know, one of the couple things that I wanna point out, um, there's one point three acres of impervious surfaces that we'd be removing. So there's a lot of green space that we'd be adding in. Um, we'd also be, you know, looking to kind of, you know, revitalize the parking area with more landscape island and trees and as you can see from this plan, and I don't know how to zoom in, but we're creating these courtyard areas here, um, you know, that'll be a nice transition from the residential building to the retail. So again, one point three acres of new green space. Um, the infrastructure's there, there's not a lot of, um, what I would call like heavy site work, um, you know, for a project like this because you've got the infrastructure in place. From an architectural standpoint, we started, um, working with a firm, Grandoff Architects, um, based in Greenwich and, you know, these are just some ideas, obviously, you know, we'd love to have more of a conversation with you about what, you know, will look like, but these are just a couple of similar projects that they've worked on and just, again, just wanted to provide a couple of examples, um, for feedback. So, so really in summary tonight, I, I just can't say it enough, we're very early in this process. We are extremely open to feedback, we'd love to hear what you think, we're open to making changes. Um, we wanna work with you to hopefully again, you know, build a successful project. Um, you know, it seems like just being at the shopping center that there's a lot of potential there and we, we'd love to, to work with you to improve it. Yes.
One more question with parking, so are some gonna park underneath and others park on the surface and walk from there?
Yeah, so typically, you know, one per unit, uh, you typically have like within the building itself, 'cause it's covered parking, which is nice. And then if you decide to have a second car, that might be surface parking or guest parking would be the surface parking. Yes.
I, I have a list of questions, so how many stories is Stop &amp; Shop?
I think it's one story, but if you're asking for height, I do not know, I have to get back to you.
It's like one and a half stories, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's facade is elevated.
It's like two, three.
Maybe a mezzanine, it's up there, it's, it's less than thirty five.
Okay, um, and how many of portable units?
Hasn't been discussed yet, but we're open to.
So your, your, your newly adopted requirement of ten percent would apply to this project?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I would, I would like to have that conversation, for, for.
It won't need to be a conversation, it'll be a requirement.
Right, but maybe further, yeah.
But more than just, you know. Um, and then I also, um, I know public transportation is available from forty four, obviously.
Right.
Okay, um, and what about the traffic? I mean, I know you're saying that the traffic is gonna come in on forty four, but I mean currently there are ways to get into this. area off of Bushy Hill that could get congested.
Yeah, I I think we would work to, you know, make sure that we still have those accessways so that they're not just coming in off forty-four and that there's a good access management plan. What I will say is from like a trip generation standpoint, residential is a lower trip generator use than retail. So you know, there is an overall improvement of traffic if this was fully, you know, vacated or sorry, fully occupied retail compared to the residential type use.
Although that might vary based on like daily commute and stuff like that, whereas people aren't going to those shops at seven-thirty in the morning because they wouldn't be open, and then they would be maybe heading to work at that time, but you know, something to consider it.
Well, yeah. Un-unfortunate, not a lot of people are going to those shops in general, which is why the parking lot is empty in this picture.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Um I have a I just have a comment about the aesthetics, um and I may be alone in this, so I'm not claiming to speak for anybody else on the design review board or on this board, but personally, in that location, I think that um it lends itself to having something a little bit more unique, like we have a million of these kinds of units all over town at this point, and I personally feel like where it's already in this like boxy retail area, we could look at something that's a little bit more contemporary just to offer a little bit more of a variety in the aesthetic. Um not that it should be like completely outside of like kind of what um is found in the town, but it doesn't necessarily have to be like peaked roofs and white siding, it could have a little bit more of an industrial vibe to it, I think, and still be a nice place and offer people a different kind of unique experience that they're not getting in all the other units that we have that look just like this. That's just my take on that.
I I I.
Now, are you trying to get off the podium, or are you?
No, no, I'm happy to answer your question.
Yeah, I had another question.
Yeah, I have a couple of things about it.
Uh I just wanted to be clear, the new building, the new development is just residential, you're not adding any retail space?
That's correct.
Would you, and why is that?
I think it's just the logistics of the building and how we wanted to, um if you look at the plan kind of closely, the the courtyards and the green space, um it was a little bit more challenging to put retail there and keep that sort of transition. We could certainly look at it if that if that's something that the board thinks would be viable, we can look at a retail component.
Yeah, this one, I'm just trying to get clarification.
Yeah, but just to be, another whack at the issue.
Yeah.
When you talk about mixed use, you're not talking about adding anything residential. Yeah, whatever else you're referring to is already there.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
I I just have one more comment, um um overall, I I like where this is. So I will say that. Don't like that it's four stories.
Mm-hmm.
Um I don't know if anyone else has that same takeaway, but that is mine.
I think if you took away the peaked roofs, you'd have the.
Fair enough, right, um.
Oh no.
But it still is four, yeah.
It's still a lot, yeah, yeah, I agree. You don't want it to stand out so much.
Yeah. I don't think we currently have any.
Towering.
E- even on forty-four, it would look weird. Yeah, a big tower.
Tall.
I'm not sure if you've toured Simsbury, it's flavorful, it's like, there are no four-story apartments, that's not.
I've. Right.
All of the apartment complexes I can see are three stories or two. And you know, um there's this, I'm I'm not, I'm, I think you're headed in the right direction here. But um you have to know, there are a lot of people in Simsbury who don't wanna see any more apartments. In town indefinitely, you know, and um but you know, there are a lot of people who think it's for variety reasons, so. You go in there with some trepidation, but the thing is that, you know, there was, it's reference to the need for uh housing in in Hartford, Greater Hartford areas, and reference to that, to thirty thousand units. Do you take that number and do some mach- machinations to that number and come up with three hundred units for this? Are you looking at your square footage and I'm talking, make the building, that tells you three hundred, you know?
It's a combination of both, so I think as a civil engineer, you know, we're looking at the space and we're looking at how do we make it work? From the development side and the ownership side, they're crunching their numbers, you know, to figure out financially, you know,
Mm-hmm, yeah.
what will work for them based on the unit count.
Yeah, I was I would, if it hadn't been brought apart, the height of the building is gonna have to be confronted. I mean, that's gonna be, there's a lot of sensitivity and talent to that. In that area, you certainly have this a certain amount of screening along Bushy Hill. You know, as you drive along, you could see they've thinned it out on the lower of all of those streets, so you could see right through there, I mean.
Yeah. Right.
Uh if you're on the road, you'd be looking right into these buildings. So you know, it's it's a sensitivity that sort of become subjective life, since we look at continuing to change in Simsbury to to change, you know? There are folks that are uncomfortable, but any anyway, I think you're making a good start, I can hope you're not sort of wedded to some of these things. We know there's gonna be sensitivity. I I had Hmm, I think I'm I'm all set for now.
I have a question and Shannon has a question. Oh, oh, thank you. Um you might not have this information either, but I thought I would ask, um is there an uh is the comparative revenue like for our tax base, is that the same, is it going, is it maybe George, I I don't know who would be able to answer that, but I'm just trying to, you know, we're very fiscally concerned about um making sure that we make smart decisions for for our residents.
I'm not gonna try to answer that, I'm not the assessor, um you know, I I think it's usually as part of applications like this, we would ask for some sort of fiscal impact analysis. Uh you know, re- retail is difficult these days, and so you know, valuation for retail is is a challenge, and
Right.
valuation for X number of multifamily residential units are uh more than typically um tax positive.
Okay.
We'll provide you with some of that information.
Great.
We're at an early stage, we're trying to get information, that's a very legitimate question, we don't have the answer tonight, but we'll get it to you.
Yeah. Fine.
We'll start, give it to George soon, yeah.
Great.
And with that, uh Board of Ed study would be helpful, any impact?
Yeah.
Have you guys considered a for-sale product instead of a for-rent?
Condos. We 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 have it, um.
Okay, could you? We currently have two condos on the market, I just checked, in Simsbury. We're getting multiple bids because we do need housing. We have a total of ten properties on the market in Simsbury right now. So there's a demand, and I will tell you kind of, I think, what Shannon said. We have right now at Canal Place, Kings Ridge, The Ridge, Aspen Green, Mill Commons, Dorset Crossing, Highcroft, and Simsbury Center. They all have vacancies, and they're offering specials, they're offering credits. So that tells me that the need for apartments right now is not high, if there's vacancies at all of those. So just something to consider.
It's a good comment, but but that's a significant question for ownership.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, appreciate it.
It's good.
So how long have you owned this property?
We we bought it uh about four months before COVID, yeah.
We're just talking about, okay.
So that that's that's what that's what killed us.
Alright, I see. Well, I I like the concept, I think the location is good for housing near shopping. Since retail is suffering these days, more people work remotely from home, don't do as much commuting. Uh it it they they wouldn't really be sticking up like a sort um being four stories, so I also am concerned about that. I grew up in Greenwich and they created three-story limit to everything. So all the businesses moved to Stanford, other than the certain kind. Um but I understand the economics, that you fit more units if you can do four stories than three. But maybe a different design with the peaked roof would stick up less, but you know, it it's obviously economics for you what works, so.
Is the concern the the four stories or like just looking looking height-wise higher than everything else?
Height-wise.
Some height.
The look of something really.
I think it's a mixture, to be honest, because I think
Yes.
you, I think if it didn't stand out so much, it would be not as big of a problem on face value on this site. However, I think the precedent that it sets in when we're having these conversations in other locations could be problematic. So I think that would be something that we would need to like investigate, but I think in general, if it didn't feel drastically huge compared to the other buildings, like I don't, a movie theater's pretty tall, like, you know what I mean? So I don't know how tall four stories like looks I would wanna see. Um and I'm sorry, are you done, or did you have more you wanted to add before I came?
Not well, I can.
And then I just, one other comment I had was I would really like in future, obviously this is very preliminary, but in future, um
No, that's pretty cool.
sites, I would like to just really see an emphasis on walkability so that we can really understand, like, what's that like for somebody?
Mm-hmm.
Because it is sort of like this kind of maze of parking lot, and then you're out on forty-four and there's like all these amenities right there for people who live there, but I'd like to understand, like, what's it really like for these people when they're trying to walk around? How are they part of a community there?
We have a couple comments. So I, um this is my neck of the woods, I worked in the, you know, Simsbury Commons area for years. Um I watched, you know, as businesses cycled in and out, so I'm aware of how much trouble you're having keeping retail spaces in there. I would love to see you keep as much as you could. I understand that's a a difficult thing. My my hope would be that, you know, adding some apartments, hopefully getting a bus stop actually like in the lot would be a great thing that could maybe keep some of those businesses more afloat. Um I would, I'd love to maintain as much retail as we could um in that area, I just think it's a great thing there. Um as it being four stories, I do know there is a couple miles down the road in Canton on forty-four, there's a brand-new apartment complex. I don't know whether it's three or four stories, but the ground level starts a a story up. It is, and it has no um no trees in front of it, it's just there. So I'm not super concerned about having four stories behind all this uh, you know, tree coverage. But I also do know that there is there's a large segment of town that says we don't have any buildings above three stories, I think we have one four-story building in town, they don't, there's a segment of town that's just just does not want four-story buildings. I don't think this will be a problem, but that's something that, you know, we have to keep in mind, our constituents, they don't want that.
Yeah, uh that's a lot of sense. I think the other part that was said too is adding in the residential will also help the retail, right? Because there's gonna be like a customer base, which is nice.
Yes. Yeah.
Does the restaurant at the corner do well? Is it a Chili's?
Chili's.
The
Chili's.
The, okay, there's a couple restaurants, so the the Chili's, you speak, n- no.
Well, the Chili's, yeah. Why are you wondering? Is it worth keeping? Apparently you think it's not worth keeping.
Like you love there all the time.
Well, they they with without getting into too much disclosure, they they canceled their lease.
Okay.
Alright, and we're doing everything we can to get something out of them to encourage them to stay.
Okay.
Seems like a tough spot too, for you, I mean, at the corner.
Alright, so then all residential makes sense.
Okay.
I I I just wanted to add one one more thing on. For that, yeah.
This issue with the height of the building, uh people get confused about this because when you say four stories, that doesn't tell you that much. What we're trying to get at is how tall is that building? So it's like to the top of the gable roof, the ridge line. So as you come back to Simsbury to talk about this, beware that and I make the point partly because everything else around there is flat roofs. And so I think if you, you know, if you're designing to sort of be reflective somewhat of the neighborhood, um you might end up looking at a flat roof anyway, so four stories with a flat roof is one thing. Four stories with gable roof.
It's it's actually five.
Pitch.
Because of the parking. Because of the parking.
Exactly, those are.
No, it's it's.
Yeah, beware.
No, you have five rows of windows in one of your renderings.
Isn't that just a design example? I don't think that's an example.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that that wasn't what we were getting at, that was just a sample from the architectural firm.
Oh, okay.
That's like, that's like a portfolio.
Because the parking.
But and in New England, those gable roofs, it's a nice thing.
Parking is a whole year, so it's it's on the first level, just not where the seats are.
You know, there might be reason to not go in that direction here to get, you know, furniture.
Oh.
That's why we're here now, hundred percent, yeah.
But it's the parking, the picture I'm seeing, is that what it's gonna be on?
Oh, no, no, this is.
It's gonna be under.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I.
Down like.
No, I don't want you to get confused.
So it's three stories of residential.
No, I was just backing up, so these are pictures of other projects that this architect has worked on.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
The proposal right now, what you're kind of seeing is these landscaped areas are elevated and the parking is underneath. So the the yellow is the residential units, um and there it's four stories. The parking goes um underneath, underneath.
Oh, when, oh, sorry, go ahead, Tony.
Right, um.
Yeah, yeah, a view, uh maybe too early in the process, but have you done any economic analysis as to what the minimum number of units you would need in order for this to be a financially successful project?
I personally haven't, I'm sure ownership is.
It's early.
Yeah.
Part of it.
It's early in the project.
It's early in the process, okay.
Um when you guys take this further and decide what this is gonna be, um could you consider amenities?
Oh, yeah.
So other green spaces, if you do a pool, if you would do a gym, patioats, fire pits, dog park, I mean, not saying that you can, but.
We'd probably. Yeah, we'd probably do almost all of the above, as you just said, so yeah, for sure, we will, we will.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Well, um yeah, my initial thoughts, um looking at a tall building is a lot less offensive to me than looking at a insane amount of empty pavement. This picture's gonna be burned into my brain. Um it's a complete waste of space, as is. I would like to see the entire parking lot torn up and turned into literally anything else, maybe a park. I understand people need to park in the four-story or in the apartment building. So is what it is, but uh to me, a four-story building is not offensive. Buildings are tall. When light hits mass, it reflects back and you you look at it and you see this the matter that's made up of the building, it's not offensive to the eye necessarily. Um you can't see the ridge from here, so I don't know if people are gonna be upset that you can't see the ridge past the building. Um but I can't see anything past the the waste of space that the existing lot currently is. Um it is right next to shopping, uh S- Stop and Shop, right next to the the movie theater. Um I so there's so a affordable component to it, 'cause there has to be legally, we were able to pass that. Um I definitely like to see some uh integration of walking trails, biking trails. Um but in terms of height, I have no issue with that, and I'd like to see this parking lot get turned into just literally anything else than what it is right now, which is just something that causes flooding and is a whole in our grand list. Whereas uh just, we don't get anything out of that, right? We don't get it any anything out of vacant residential either. So I mean, the the question was raised, what would be more tax positive to us, the existing commercial or this? I mean, this and probably by a lot. Um we.
I was looking for the differential.
I know, I know. It it's, we pay a lot of taxes in this town, we're only ever gonna seemingly pay more. We have to ga- build our tax base somehow. This is a very valuable property that will contribute a lot in taxes. Can't imagine, uh there's gonna be a ton of two, three-bedroom apartments uh in this, which can raise the costs. Now, I I don't tend to speak for the majority of the uh of the board, but that's certainly my my take on it. I think we're focusing way too much on the height. It's it's a, it's a, it's a strip mall. It's not, it's not a beautiful area, this is a series of train restaurants attached to a stroid that causes traffic accidents, it causes traffic. This this seems like a massive improvement to me.
Okay.
And it's exactly where I wanna see it.
Alright, so. Does anybody else wanna add something?
No, I'll just uh say I think this is a positive development, uh obviously, we have a lot of questions, but I think you're headed in the right direction.
Yeah, let's keep going.
No, I think.
Are we done?
Yes.
Now, did you, did one of your colleagues, did anybody else wanna speak on about the project, or is that satisfactory?
Oh, we're we're very pleased with the feedback we've had tonight. We'll try to get a good summary of town staff so that we have a checklist that we'll look at more, but I think we'll be proceeding to have some development meetings on the side.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
We have some other business to take care of, so thank you for coming out tonight and uh and taking your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Show us what the positive here.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing and and last thing on our agenda for tonight is to take a few minutes on, uh, the Charter Review Commission. Um, I sent a note around a couple, probably two weeks ago now, to all of the commission members. Uh, fa- that was a follow-up to a charter commission meeting that, Aaron Levitt Smith, the chairman of the Planning Commission, and I were asked to attend uh, to, uh, basically engage in some conversation about planning, the planning and zoning commissions. And as I said in the note I sent around, there is widespread use in the state of Connecticut of a single commission in town sometimes, where there's one planning and zoning commission. The territory covered by the two commissions is exactly, uh, divided. I mean, it's it's an exact consolidation of what is allocated in Simsbury, for instance. Zoning is zoning, planning is planning, and while there's coordination and communication, there's so there are many towns where they're doing a consolidated planning and zoning commission. And, uh, the planning, the, uh, Charter Revision Commission was given a list of topics from the Board of Selectmen to, uh, create some assessment of, and, uh, I didn't bring the list with me, the only one I'm I'm concerned about really is, they were, uh, assigned, this is the Charter Revision Commission, to look at the, uh, notion of consolidating potential. I don't know if potential is the right word, but, um, you're looking for some feedback, the Board of Selectmen is looking for the Charter Revision Commission to give them some feedback about the potential, I guess that's the right word, for consolidating planning and zoning in Simsbury. And so what I sent around was, um, uh, an invitation really that was extended by, uh, the chairman of Charter Revision Commission, Chris, uh,
Barnett.
Barnett. Uh, she's looking for comments, feedback from members of the Planning Commission and members of the Zoning Commission. And so I informed you of that interest and encouraged that you just, if you had something to say about it, send a note to, uh, Franklin in, uh, the town manager's office. And, uh, uh, one day early, midweek last week, I checked with him and he hadn't received any comments from any of our.
Yeah, we've sent in comments.
I know Diane did, I saw her.
She didn't send it to Franklin, directions were sent it to Franklin.
I sent it to Franklin.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
Well, he says you, it didn't get there, so.
I sent it.
We'll take note of that.
So do you just want us to do that, or are we gonna discuss tonight at all?
We're gonna do both. Or, well, okay, we'll we'll start with me, Kate, and then you can, okay. So, um, for people who forwarded comments to Franklin, who who was it, that's Shannon? Does anybody?
I did, he confirmed he got it too.
And was that after last Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, anybody else, the rumor is.
I saw Diane had sent a note and I didn't see if she copied Franklin or not, I thought she did.
It's it's not, this isn't over yet, I'm just trying to make sure we correct the record here. But my concern was that I didn't want to, uh, um, miss an opportunity to say something. Um, I know we haven't spent time discussing this and probably, I don't know how many members of our commission are even aware that there's another structure that is is common in Connecticut. But, um, I thought that we ought to give it a few minutes here at our meeting and, um, I I my inclination is to send a summary, some sort, my reaction to whatever we say here tonight, I'm gonna send a note to the, uh, chairman of the, uh, Charter Revision Commission to Chris. And, uh, we'll see what we wanna say, if anybody doesn't wanna be, I I wouldn't quote anybody or or name any commission numbers, but I would just say, you know, we had half the commission thought, you know, we should just keep doing what we're doing, you know, whatever, something like that, I'm not looking for terribly in-depth remarks unless you have some, but if you had some, um, well, we'll go back to that. They're they're awaiting something from us, and there happens to be a Charter Revision Commission to meeting tomorrow night. So I thought if we could take a few minutes tonight and, uh, you know, for those who have thought about it, if there's something you'd like to pass along, um, that I could put into a summary, I'd be happy to hear it and to deliver the message, so how about, uh, uh, Dagny, you're on the end down there.
Yeah.
Did you have anything to say about this issue, I know it's it's not necessarily a fair thing to start with.
Questions, so we have I I don't know how many town, it's in Connecticut and I I've had a job where I went to many, many towns and reviewed their zoning regs and analyzed values of properties and farmland preservation. So I, I think it depends on whether you're a small town and they think that the combined commission works fine for them. Maybe there isn't as much to consider as if you were a big city. It may be involved a lot more complex issues and having two bodies makes more sense. Uh, for Simsbury, a mid-sized, uh, suburban town, we do have some controversial things that come up, but I I don't have an opinion cause I don't know how well the Planning Commission works or feels, whether it's do they recommend stuff to us?
Yes.
Design review recommends stuff to us?
Yeah.
And then we are the ones with the regulations.
Just a moment on that, the distinction is design review board, that's part of us.
Okay.
Uh, but the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Yes, the Planning Commission is a separate entity, their charter is from the state of Connecticut, it's in the state statute.
So it deals more with the plan of development that has to be updated every ten years, and it's more policy, more visionary, and we're the regulatory body.
Yep.
Yeah.
So maybe it makes sense to just keep it the way it is.
Well, it's, you mentioned the regulatory body, uh, versus the actual planning, um, I I recently, we engaged in a good amount of planning ourself, we created a new zone, we create a lot of the new rules. I think enforcing the rules that you yourself, well, that you yourself create, um, is probably fairly valuable, I mean, right now we have a charter or, uh, uh, not a charter, you know, plan of conservation and development that we, well, we influence in that, I can go and speak at a public hearing at it, but I mean, we don't create that plan of conservation development, the Planning Commission does. Um, sorry, um, it might be, it might make a a plan of conservation and development more effective, um, if it's being created by the body that is also going to be actioning the plan of conservation development. I think we've done a fairly good job in Simsbury of 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 sticking to that plan of conservation development, working with the planning department. Uh, I I but I I, we could also do that if they were in here with us as one one body, I don't really have any idea with that. My only concern with combining the two is I would worry that we would, our business would kind of grind to a halt when we're doing plan of the plan of conservation development, as that's a big, that's a year, that's a year of, I better, we better hope there's no big, uh, big controversial projects because it's, uh, we're not gonna have time to talk about it, cause we'll be working on the plan of conservation development.
It's telling the reality is that it wouldn't grind to a halt, you'd have more meetings.
Well, yeah, right, which, so that's something to consider, but I in general, we do a lot of planning here, and we should do a lot of planning here, we should create we should create policy here, um, so, no, that's that's all I have.
I, um, I did submit comments, which I was able to pull up here, and I I will echo some of the things that, um, Tucker just said, but i- in addition, I know there's been a sort of some preliminary discussion about this perhaps being a time-saving initiative, uh, to combine the two boards, but, I mean, we just had, we just went through three public hearings on one issue. Um, and I support that because it gave the, uh, gave the public more opportunity to participate. So from that perspective, I don't think it's a time savings, you know, we'd we'd have to look obviously at other things, but from the perspective of public input, that was a six-week or, yeah, about six-week period. Um, I also think, like to Tucker's point, we just created some really good, solid policy. And I would like to see us move that forward before we introduce anything else to it. Um, I'm not opposed to merging the two boards at some point, but I don't think now is necessarily the time to do that. I would agree with, sorry, I do agree with both of them, um, I think that the way that Simsbury is and maybe not other towns, um, we do have two very distinct, uh, responsibilities. And I think zoning does a very good job with the applications, with the discussions, with the policy. And I think planning does a very good job with the overview of what our goals are for Simsbury. And I think by keeping them separate in that way, you know, again, if we had something for planning tonight, then that would maybe take away, and I don't wanna take away from our applications or what we're creating. So I'm pretty happy with them separate for now.
Yeah, so I would agree with that, um, and I'll just add a little context to, um, where my feelings come from. Um, so I've served on a joint planning and zoning commission in Vermont, the town was about a quarter the size of Simsbury with less than a quarter of the number of applications, like there wasn't a ton of growth happening in the town. And we still had to do a full plan, we had to go through and rezone a bunch of stuff that was spot zoned. There was so much work, we were meeting multiple times a week, every week, and that was for, and I think we were not an inefficient board, but it was the amount of work required to both deal with the zoning issues and deal with the planning issues and still your occasional sign permit, um, applications for some developments smaller. Um, and it was so time-consuming that I just can't imagine trying to manage through both at the size and the scale that we're doing right now. And I think as a, as a zoning commission, we're not even doing all the things, um, to Shannon's point, that we could be doing, like we took time to do those couple things, think about the list that we have that we created for ourselves, you know, uh, six months ago or eight months ago. We still have all those things to do and we're still like cranking through just the first like one of those things. And so to me, it feels like if we tried to combine, we would just be biting off a little bit more than we could chew. Um, and then I also kind of like the idea that they're separate, that you're not taking this one group of like six elected officials and using that to create everything, it's sort of like, we can have o- opinions on how it's implemented, but somebody else has opinions on how it's planned, and I I kinda like that separation, it just gives a little bit more, um, a little bit more diversity, I think, in how that's all approached. And I and I do think it would be great if we could maybe occasionally have some joint meetings to make sure we're all on the same page. Maybe that's the way to achieve that, like I do think some consolidation on on view is important, but there's probably other ways to do that than to have a joint board, that's just from experience where I stand on it.
So I've gone back and forth on this, initially I was in favor of, excuse me, combining the two and there were two reasons for that, one was just the amount of time that staff has to work to support two different commissions, the second, um, was, I think Jackie had raised it, it, one of the, one of the commission meetings, the Charter Revision Commission meetings was the added burden on developers having to appear, uh, you know, having to appear before two boards, if they only had to appear before one board, that could reduce their, their amount of work. But after listening to a lot of input, uh, both at the Charter, uh, Charter Revision Commission meetings and, uh, talking to other commissioners, I'm now in favor of keeping them separate, uh, two reasons for that, one is I think if we combine them, we're gonna be focused on the most pressing needs, which are zoning issues that come up with a lot with regularity, and we're gonna ignore planning, planning will be set back, we won't be focused on that because we have other pressing needs. The second, I think Kate just mentioned it is, and George also threatened us with more meetings, it's just the volume of work that zoning that we would have to do, I mean, we're already, uh, we already do two meetings a month and if we add, if we combine the two, I think necessarily that's gonna lead to more work for commissioners and we're all volunteers, we don't get paid for this, I mean, we do it because, uh, we wanted, uh, help the town, but I think it, you know, that would add uh, additional work to, uh, commissioners, I think it's working fine as it is and and for the reflection, I would support keeping keeping them separate.
Josh, did you wanna say?
Yeah, I, so most of what I would like to say has already been said, but in addition to what's been said, I think, I think we as a town want to keep local government accessible to the average person. And two, two nights a month can be a real commitment for some people. And combining these is just gonna have even more of meetings. You know, your average person, it's, uh, we, you know, it can, it's gonna be a real commitment if we wind up doing a meeting every week, you know? And I don't, I don't, I mean, I know I can do that, but I don't know how many people in town would be willing to do a meeting a week.
Other things.
Not to mention, we don't come in here cold, you know, we, there's there's preparation time.
That said, it might be beneficial to schedule like a couple of times a year, like some sort of joint meeting.
Yeah.
Where where there is some level, like we'd have to think about what we want that agenda to look like, I wouldn't wanna to just be us all sitting in the room having, you know, I'd want there to be like real purpose behind it, but it might be, that might be a way to do it without having to take on the burden of twice as much work.
Well, um, what I raised at at that meeting, um, where Erin and I were appeared was, uh, repeatedly, um, do some study, get some information, they they had no information on the the proportion of towns that do one versus the other, and my thought is that, um, I'm not unwilling to change, but I'm unwilling to change for no good reason. And, uh, until there is some compelling reason surfaces, uh, that that makes it clear that the town residents would be better served by a consolidated entity than the two board commissions that we use now. I'm I'm not inclined to do it or to support it, I I think it's, you know, really some wheel spinning here that, while I did hear at that meeting, there was some moments of sort of shouting out that there, there's at least a small number of people who feel like the zoning commission needs greater oversight, I'm not sure what greater oversight means, but we need greater oversight. Did you have some insight on that topic?
Then being directly elected by the voters.
Well, uh, that's the, you know, I did hand pass along comment, copies of the regulation that they created in Canton thirteen years ago, when they went from a zoning and planning separate to consolidation thirteen years ago. Um, it was, their, the the members of their consolidated commission are are not elected, they're appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And so, you know, you start to get into the question of how do you maintain appropriate political balance, some of that kind of stuff, so there's some, some issues to making this work, but the other thing about Canton, and I I don't wanna sound like I'm picking on them, but I have limited time, I just wanted to see what one local entity was doing. They also have only one meeting a month, but I know the statute provides for sort of wide use of subcommittees. If that's, you know, the inclination, so there could be a lot of subcommittees over there, I don't know what they're doing. But, um, there was nobody else in the room when I was at that meeting two weeks ago who knew either. So, I'm, I don't, well, everybody's has the same goal in mind, we all wanna do better, but I'm not sure this is worth spending a lot of time with, I'm not in favor of moving towards a consolidated board, uh, for the sake of everybody else's doing it, well, as you mentioned, Dagny, uh, Dagny, there's issues with the size and the traditions of the community and what they're used to. And I think, uh, you know, this separate board, two boards has served, and we'll look out there, it's served as well for since zoning was created nineteen thirty-five, and it's not an accident the way the town looks. I mean, so sometimes it kinda scratch your head and wonder how things happen, but uh, good luck and and good intentions in some cases are enough, and but not, it's not what I wanna plan on the future, but it's sustained us for a long time, and so we're in pretty good shape, I think. Uh, my other concern is that for folks that have some suggestions about how we could do better, um, I I don't know why they don't just, you know, let us know, you know? If they think that, you know. They think that, you know, architects who work with developers have to come to too many meetings here. I don't know what to say about that, but I also wanna hear that they go to the same number of meetings. They go to fewer meetings than other towns for the same-sized projects. Maybe there's something to be learned there, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure they do because I feel like what planning is improving is different, you know?
I know, but there's no facts on the table. There's just sort of, you know, assertions that are little, are hard to relate to. But again, if we had a set of, some compelling data, compelling information, that the town could be served better, then I think we have an obligation to actually do something about that. And there's a statute that I also circulated copies of that outlines the way the consolidation can take place legally. And it, it only requires the action of the Board of Selectmen. And it doesn't require a referendum, it doesn't require to be, you know, change made on a election day or anything like that. So it's easier to do than you think. It's, it's gonna be awkward because you have to go from, in our case, two boards with, with six members each down to, you know, something ranging from five up to ten on the board, and not counting alternates. So some people would end up displaced, some people would be, potentially wanna be displaced. And so I don't know what it does for recruiting. But no one does, as far as I know. I don't know if there's somebody gonna work on a report, but if, if there is one, one day, I'm sure we'll be alerted and we'll have some access to that report. But I think, you know, my, my sense of what we feel as a group is that there isn't, there isn't any real support for, for moving ahead based on what we know now. So that might change if
Bruce, I've been just looking at this and I, I did send this to you and, or to Franklin and copied you and Mark Nelson and Erin on March sixth.
Well, I'll be in touch with Franklin early tomorrow to point out to him that he's missed a few messages and to submit some additional comments. But that would be the gist of it. I, I wouldn't quote anybody, not that you, you all don't deserve credit for some, some helpful thinking. But I don't believe that it's necessary and that we can get across the point as a group. And we'll see what happens. I don't know when the Charter Revision Commission process ends. But I, I am aware that this topic has been examined at least in the most recent one, seven years ago, or whenever it was. And here we are, it's the same thing. So I don't know if there was a study or an effort to analyze the situation back then and something that could be compared to. You know what I know at this point. No, actually, and I think we know more than, I know we know more than the folks that are gonna make decisions on this before, hopefully before noon. So, anybody wanna say anything else about the Charter Revision Commission?
So you're gonna let them know tomorrow?
Yes, I'm gonna be in touch because their, their meeting is at six-thirty, I think, or six o'clock. So I gotta get something off to Franklin and the A. Bruce, did you wanna say anything about the Charter Revision Commission?
I do not.
You heard it all.
No, it's quite, you know, it's, it's quite likely inappropriate for me to comment. My, my job and my staff will, has the pleasure to serve the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission today. We'll, we will continue to serve with the utmost professionalism that we provide. If it was a combined group, we would do the same thing.
Well, you know, I, I had intended to point this out and forgot. But I should've made some better notes. I think that the fact that we have access to, ongoing access to talented professional staff, that it's supporting, the same people are supporting the zoning and the planning efforts here. So they are, to the extent that we might drift apart a little bit during the course of a year, our staff are, are on top of this. And so when there's a need to deal with something, we get the message. I mean, it doesn't slip by us.
I have been, I, I had, I had been asked some questions from, from Franklin, you know, regarding specific data. And I provided that. You know, the one thing I would just clarify for everybody, the developers have to go to two meetings of both bodies, maybe three or four times a year. And again, it occurs when there's a, you know, either a zone change application or a planned area development application where under the statute it says, recommendation from the Planning Commission and then on to the Zoning Commission. It happens very rarely on a calendar year.
Right.
So there are dozens and dozens of developers going to two meetings. It's not happening.
Because they mainly come to zoning.
See, there's no perspective on that when we connect with a group. The Charter Revision Commission has no idea. All they hear is developers are not coming to Simsbury.
I provided some of that data to, to, to the committee.
Well, I'm not pointing the finger, I just want, you know, the frame of reference of the churches in charge is women. But I think that, we have great confidence in the work and the success that we've had together.
Three times, they keep asking.
I don't, I don't know that that would change very much. The way it gets done would change if we had one commission instead of two. I appreciate that you would potentially, your evening schedule would change. And I think that would be a fine thing. But as part of, you know, a new approach. And when we look at Canton, they say they only have one meeting. It's one monthly meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I say, how do you do that? How does that work? And I'd say the same thing to the staff, how does that work?
Well, a lot more control from the Board of Selectmen, probably a lot more staffing, but
If the planning committee, commission doesn't have items that they need to meet about, then do they, then they wouldn't have to have meetings. And then it wouldn't be extra meetings for anyone to go to, right? Like, but if they are doing work and they are having those meetings, then that's the work that this body would all be doing, all those meetings, whatever it is. Whenever they're meeting, it would be that and whatever we're meeting.
Right, they went from six commissioners to seven when they consolidated.
They would be additional licenses.
Yeah.
They would be additional licenses. But the zoning commission meets twenty-four times a year. The, the Planning Commission meets sixteen
That's still a lot.
Times a year, fourteen to sixteen.
It's a lot.
But again, one, you know, so they have different roles, they have different responsibilities.
Last year, it was twenty-five last year, you know?
Twenty-five, and maybe
Okay, a lot of special meetings.
Yep.
Well
Having, whatever you guys wanna do.
I think we've covered this enough. And, um, we, we will, in our likelihood, forward the minutes of, uh, well, I don't know, I don't, is there need to, you could put pretty thin minutes. In, in the minutes to tonight's meeting, the comments made here could be pretty succinct. And so there's no value in forwarding the minutes.
So again, we wouldn't, we wouldn't normally unless directed by you. So it, it, we wouldn't normally include specific comments because you didn't take any action. We would say simply a sentence or two that says the commission discussed the Charter Review Commission consolidation. But if you wanted us to, we could do that, in my direction.
Right, I'm sorry, Bruce, didn't you say you're gonna send a note to the Charter Revision Commission summarizing this discussion?
Yeah.
Frankly, I would, I would rather than one of the commissioners do it under your own pen.
Yeah, okay. And, and does anybody feel differently? That's sort of my strategy. Okay, that's what I'll do. And that's the last item on our agenda. Is there anything else anybody felt was important yet to?
Get adjourned.
Then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Was that you, Jackie?
Second.
And the second, all in favor, say aye please. Those opposed, please. Motion carries, the meeting's adjourned at eight twenty-one.
For over forty years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming
Education.
And live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings and celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SCM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth.
And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SCM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SCM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SCM isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us. Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that SCM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town
Your schools
And your government Come together.